All right, it is five thirty one, so we'll call this meeting to order. Reverend William Harrow with Mount Sinai Baptist Church will give our indication.
Good evening.
Good evening.
God bless you. One thing I want to say, members of our church who are present tonight, from my Zion's church, we're happy to be here. Let's bow heads and pray. Eternal God, our Father, the Word in Psalms twenty-four says that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and the dwell therein. Then Isaiah, the major prophet says that Isaiah nine and six, as the child is born, the son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. We here tonight, in the presence of these witnesses, but in the face of these witnesses and the presence of your Holy Spirit, to lift petition of prayer to your throne of grace. We thank you, Lord God, for our city government. We thank you, Lord, for the leadership of our mayor, our city manager, and all respective council members that serve our community. We ask right now, Lord Jesus, to continue to bless them, to be objective in their deliberation on behalf of our city. You call us to be accountable, responsible, and credible, and use integrity and process as we go through our government proceedings. And as we come also, Lord Jesus, we thank you for the leadership of our police department, and the Chief Buddy Dolly, all of the line staff especially, for the supervisory staff, in order to do to keep our community safe. We pray for the two brothers whom you called for a liberatory reward, who serve faithfully with this apartment. We pray in addition that you would continue to bless our city council, our mayor, the responsible persons, to provide them with the needs, the financial needs that they need to improve our police department, as for revenue is concerned, raises, and make sure that the families that are represented have the time to spend with their loved ones who put their lives in harm's way every day and every night. We thank you, Father God. It would be remiss when we think about our country, the homeland of the free, homeland of the brave, bless our President, President Trump, as he deliberates on behalf of our country. You must spirit our humanity and love all your people that comprise the length and breadth of America. We thank you right now. As we go forward in this meeting, we've seen the initiative to redevelopment to South South, where our church is located here in Tifton, Georgia, to improve those deplorable conditions. We so thankful for this council and the leadership, and the leadership of our city manager, and of course, our mayor, that making positive steps to improve the living conditions of our cemetery in our South Side area. Bless right now, as we go into this forum, bless all those who are present tonight. We prepare, Lord Jesus, for the celebration of the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who is born to live us from our sins. As we face the closing of this year, we objective and optimistic about the coming year, 2019. We pray you continue to bless our city, its entirety, bless all the citizens there and blessed our sons and daughters in harm's way in the military, in places that we don't even know where they are right now, serving to keep us, to maintain in our pursuit of happiness and the freedom in America. Bless touch right now, in the name of Jesus we pray. We thank you, in the name of my Savior, our Lord, our Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. We thank you. Give your heart to say amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend Harrow. Next, one of TPP's finest, Lieutenant Dustin, will give us the.
Please write in, join me in saying please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I believe we approve it as is.
Second.
We have an motion to approve the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Next will be decision input. Jessica, do we have anybody wanting to approach? Nope. All right, well, next we will go into our presentations, which is something that we've been wanting to hear from a long time. Mr. Bruce Green is going to talk to us about South Tifton redevelopment plan, and Matt Wilson.
Jessica, could we do a sound test on this? We couldn't hear the.
Can you all hear me?
Not well. Yeah, that's what I was having trouble hearing.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come and be a part of this, and I'll just tell all of you in the room, it's good to be home. I was thinking, before we start on this, during the Reverend's prayer, about, I remember the first Christmas that we spent in this building, and Mary Alice, you were here shortly thereafter too, and we had the first city-employed Christmas party in this room. But the summer that I came here, that column was in about sixteen pieces lying on the floor, and I use that story as an example for all of you, that when we look at South Tifton, and we have looked over the last year and had a number of community meetings to talk about this, some of you say there are pieces lying around of South Tifton, and I'll tell you, they can be put back together again, both metaphorically and both realistically. And so, I'm going to use that kind of as a stepping off point to talk about this. I was contacted a little over a year ago and asked if I would take a look at this area to do, at that time, we were trying to figure out what it was, and so we subsequently called it an assessment and a strategy, because that is what you'll see tonight, the executive summary of that. And the area started off much larger. In fact, the first meeting that we had, half of Phillipsburg and half of Unionville came to the conference room down on South Main, and they were standing outside, and we quickly kind of determined from the input that night, and the city manager said, you know, the city can only do what the city has jurisdiction over, and so that drew the line at Seventeenth Street. But the input came from the Board of Education, especially the staff at Matt Wilson, that they really wanted to see some changes, because they had themselves put money in and were bringing in another grade level. So after several meetings, the city manager took kind of input. Yeah, I can do it, it's moving. You don't want to know about me, we're going to talk about this. So that area that you see, which included the Old Horizon Mill property, and it goes all the way down, is inclusive of the Matt Wilson campus, goes out to Old Omega Road and up on the western side, comes up by the cemetery, but it's inclusive of pretty much what most people would call South Tifton in the city limits. If you look at Phillipsburg and Unionville, they are South Tifton, but they're in the county. They're not within the corporate city limits. And so, in this program, what we were going to talk about very quickly tonight is what was the purpose of this, and I think most everybody in the room knows the purpose is for the city to gather the data that they need, to go in and use whatever tools they may have to help change this area. And the methodology was to gather as much information as we could, to look at the historic conditions that existed thirty, forty, fifty years ago there, even going back to the nineteen thirties, which would be eighty years ago. And we found out that there are lots of pieces of South Tifton that date back to the eighteen eighties, just like around this area in downtown, as well as in the north historic district. We looked at the current conditions. When people say, wow, South Tifton needs help, yes, it does, and we're going to show why, we think as both an outsider and an insider, that it does. What were the needs? We listened to people who came and sat in the meetings and talked out loud about what they felt the needs were, and then finally, from all of that, we took that and began to develop this plan. Some of you may or may not know that I have served as the first Main Street manager in this downtown, in this community, in nineteen eighty-six. What year is this? So it's been a few years, and I was a much younger man then, but I will tell you this, I mentioned to the minister, thirty-two years ago, forty percent of this entire downtown was vacant and deteriorated. That's twelve city blocks that was vacant and deteriorated, and so it was an enormous task, and I use these references to help you see that no matter how bad South Tifton may look in places, it can achieve the same type of economic progress in redevelopment that the rest of the town has achieved, and the question is how? How do you get there? So the critical answer is to recognize as a community and as a city government, there are problems there, and then to figure out, how did those problems evolve and come to be, and what might be some of the solutions for it? Once you realize that there's, that there are problems, to look at a comprehensive strategy, and then this is, if you hear nothing else that I say tonight, my thirty-five years in this business tells me that the city, the community, the whole, must figure out a way to put some kind of oversight and management in place, to do the day-to-day work that it takes to bring about this kind of redevelopment. Downtown Tifton came out of the deterioration, it came out of the ashes, because every single day, someone came to work and concentrated on those twelve city blocks, and went out and did outreach, and gathered information, and technical assistance, brought the state people down here, and that's how all of this happened, because somebody worked. We worked in partnership with other agencies, with the Clean Community, with the Arts Council, with the City of Tifton Police Department, the Fire Department, every agency, and Tiff County, they were all a part of what you see here, and that's what you'll see in this report. The last part is, give community support to this effort. Make sure that everybody is informed. I was here for a funeral about two weeks ago, and I saw people I had not seen in twenty-five years, and one very, very distinguished Tiftonian came up to me and said, I am so excited about what's going to happen in South Tifton, because as we lift that area up, the entire community is lifted up as well, and I thought that was some of the most important words, I think, that could have been said. So here we go. This is kind of the general area, and the council can see this as well as you, on their computer screens. So in the early part of this, we wanted to figure out, well, where exactly was Phillipsburg? So up in the vault upstairs, we have the San Bern Fire Insurance map, that one's from nineteen seventeen, and on that map, it says that Phillipsburg is one mile due southwest of the current post office. Now stop and think, in nineteen seventeen, the post office is where the library is now. That's the federal post office that was built in the teens. So that told us that Phillipsburg itself was much further south than, began at Seventeenth Street, whereas South Tifton kind of stops at Seventeenth. Now that's not to say that there are not people living there, there are not houses there, and most of the churches are south of Seventeenth Street. So anyway, we worked on drawing this up, and for the sake of this study, South Tifton is that area that you see there. So what were the issues? We went in and we began not only to have the meetings and listen, but I began to kind of craft this out, and I said, well, absolutely deterioration. You know, you can do a windshield drive-through and see it. There's disinvestment, just like there was in downtown. People just haven't invested. Not to say that some people have not, there's some beautiful homes down there, and people have maintained their yards, but there's such a checkerboard effect of disinvestment that it, and you all know this, it affects property values. There, and again, declining property values, disorganization, and by that I mean, there is no singular entity that gets up every day and focuses on South Tifton as like a Main Street program or a development authority does, and so that's one of the recognized issues. And then disassociation. For whatever reason, the larger community kind of disassociated from South Tifton. They did that, and I promise you this, they did that with downtown thirty years ago. People would say, why are y'all messing with downtown? Go out to the mall, or go up to the north side of town. That was the concept back then. See, you've lived here, you don't realize, but thirty years ago, people had written off downtown. So it's important. And then what we began to see were the historic resources, and I was the downtown manager, and I worked in historic preservation, but I never realized some of the stuff that was in South Tifton, but what we found, and we actually got to go in it, this building on the far right, that is the oldest public meeting facility built by African-Americans in the city of Tifton, and it was built, it tells us in there, in the eighteen hundreds, it's further in the study, in the late eighteen hundreds. And I make the recommendation, I'm going to go ahead and say this, in nineteen eighty-eight, the then-city council was presented the idea of creating a historic district, and subsequently a historic district ordinance, which was a regulatory aspect of how do you begin to influence what's being done. It was recommended that all of South Tifton down to Thirteenth Street be included, and there's references to a study that was done, are y'all ready, in nineteen eighty-two. And guess who worked on that study? I was twenty-something years old. It's been a number of years, but in that study, what it said was, you really ought to consider this and putting an overlay district over this, and I bring this to point to this council tonight. Because that was not done in nineteen eighty-eight, it was not done in two thousand, and it has not subsequently been done, I can tell you that a part of the disinvestment, a part of the disorganization, and a part of the deterioration, is because no one has put, if you will, a protective covenant, and we used those words in nineteen eighty-eight in front of this council, put a protective covenant over these neighborhoods, and it will encourage people to go in there and invest, and it gets a little more complicated to that, and we'll reference zoning and land use in just a few minutes. All right, so we see though, that here's Fullwood Park, here's downtown Tifton, but then you look at the photographic, what we call the photometric indices. It's basically pictures. The camera's eye does not separate out, nor does it lie. The camera's eye is dead-on. If there's trash in the street, the photograph shows that there's trash in the street, and so again, that's a point of discrepancy. Why is there trash in the street in South Tifton, and not in front of Fullwood Park, and not in front of North Park Avenue? That's a question this community has to respond to, and that this plan does. But here is one of the most staggering quantitative differences that I found. In two thousand, when the city did an urban redevelopment plan, we did a tax-based analysis of North Park Avenue and South Park Avenue, both residential boulevards, but most recently, I went in and studied twenty-six different properties, starting at Second Street going north, all the way to Twelfth Street on North Park, starting at Central Avenue, excuse me, starting at Eighth Street, I'll get it right in a minute, pardon me, starting at Seventh Street, or eighty-two, and going south to Thirteenth. Now, listen to this. You see there that structurally, the houses, this is North Park Avenue, and that's South Park, from a time period, from a standpoint, and from a history standpoint, they're identical, yet there's a two-million-dollar property value difference in those twenty-six properties, and you know which one is which. So this, it gives you an example of a historic district that was created thirty years ago this year, and how it has sustained property values, and certainly increased property values, and yet where no recognition, no protective covenant was ever overlaid over this community, look at the difference. There's that, the property tax. Now, I was doing this with someone today, and I said, that's one hundred percent fair market value. Multiply that by forty percent, which is the assessed value, multiply that by the tax mileage of the city, and very quickly, you see that the city is not getting its tax share out of this neighborhood, because the property values, the real estate, ad valorem values are not there. So again, it goes back to justification. So I, we go back to assessment, assignment, okay, here's the, this was the old Main Street question, who's going to do what? That was a huge question back when the city, the county, and the merchants association put Main Street as a program together in our downtown, to figure out who was responsible, and that's what's missing. So in two thousand, the urban redevelopment study that was done said that the city should look at creating an urban redevelopment agency, it's equal or similar to a downtown development authority, which Tifton has had since nineteen eighty-two. And then not only have this, this community-based agency, but to hire a manager. It was a strange concept in nineteen eighty-six, because I was the first one, I know, but and what's amazing, the night we had this meeting down at the service station, the conference center, by absolute coincidence, the mayor, myself, and Lucretia were standing in a row, and I looked across and realized, my gosh, that's thirty-something years of management standing right here in this room, and I deliberately put that picture in there, because I want the community and the council to understand that management is critical to this success of this plan and assessment. And Tifton has a marvelous record of it. So here in very easy steps, and we're towards the end of kind of the summary, how do you start off? Well, here's the first phase, so the plan has been done, the city is looking at the plan, and an urban redevelopment plan was done in two thousand, so that's already on record, but now what never happened, there was never an urban redevelopment agency created, for whatever reason, it just wasn't. So that's still out there to be done, but I'll share with you in summary, members of the council, that without a doubt, in my years of experience, an urban redevelopment agency would be the critical piece of getting this done in this area. Not only that area, the urban redevelopment area goes all the way up to Twelfth Street. There are huge areas that were put in that study, because remember what I said, that Park Avenue was in trouble, downtown was in trouble, there were several places that disinvestment was occurring, so that's why the city had this urban redevelopment plan done. And then again, at some point, look at seriously hiring a director, whether it's part-time or full-time, that's a decision the city has to make. Once the director gets in place, boy, do they have their work to do, and you can see this as it's spelled out. But by March of next year, or the spring of next year, if that director is in place, that director ought to be hitting the ground running and getting involved in every single public-private venture that's being done to bring about revitalization of South Tifton. And then, let's go about to accountability. You can't bring about a program of redevelopment, you can't put money into a community unless you study and pay attention to what we call ROI, the return on the investment. And so early on, with Tifton's Main Street program, because this particular manager worked in City Hall, I went over in the tax office and started talking to the tax clerk, and I said, can we somehow document from the public record, the baseline values? That's how I knew to do that quantitative analysis that you saw a minute ago on North Park and South Park. Yes, there's a way to take it. There's an old saying from the nineteen eighties, voodoo economics, you can make up numbers to make them do whatever you want them to do, but when you take them from the tax base, when you take them from the tax digester, and you take them from the public record, everybody trusts that information, and what you can do is monitor that over a period of time, and you should, because the city's tax revenue comes from those tax bases. And again, this is kind of a calendar timeline, but if everything goes as the city wishes it to go, by next year, you should begin to see some substantial differences. Can I share this with you? I'm an outside consultant, but I just happen to have the real-life experience of having lived here thirty years ago and worked on this. The third year that we had Main Street going, we averaged a million dollars a year of reinvestment in this downtown, and in nineteen eighty-eight money, that was a lot of money, a million dollars a year, and we started with nothing. So who's the team? Who's responsible? Absolutely, the city of Tifton, because they've asked for this study to be done, mayor and council, and then all the departments within the city that can bring anything to the table, and then you see this T U R A, that's the Tifton Urban Redevelopment Agency, if it is created. It is empowered by, and we'll show you in a moment, by a code in the state of Georgia that was written in the nineteen, late fifties, sixties. Does anybody know enough about American city history? What was happening in the sixties? Urban decay. And so the federal government started with urban redevelopment, and then the state of Georgia started with urban redevelopment, and they wrote code, they wrote laws to help municipalities and counties clean up this urban decay, and so this is where this particular reference comes from. So the neighborhood absolutely has to be a part of this, and have been to this night. The stakeholders, the property owners, the residents, the tenants, the business owners, the churches, we had that conversation, clearly, they need to be involved, and of course, the school board, we know, the city, county, and then outside investors, who are going to be the risk-takers, as well as the inside investors, the people that have lived there and have invested their life and fortune in their property. Now, I can tell you this, real quick, there is a methodology or an approach to doing this that has been proven, and it happens to have been proven right here in Tifton. Tifton is one of the most successful Main Street cities, along with a few others in the state of Georgia, out of the one hundred that exist, and it's this, the first part, organization and policy. Who is responsible for what? Who is responsible for what, of getting this done? Design guidelines. I challenge you all, as both the city, the community, investors, don't go in there willy-nilly and start doing stuff without really looking at this plan and a focused method of approach, because we encountered some of that in the early years of Main Street, and the city had to adopt some rules and regulations, because we were giving money to people and they weren't following guidelines. It's very easy to do design guidelines, and then finally, if you want to get people to invest, or to put money in this area, you've got to go out and promote the area. You know, the first thing they're going to tell you, it's not safe. Thirty-two years ago, they said the very same thing about downtown, it's not safe, and then they threw the P-word in front of you, there's no parking. And what that is, I'll be honest with y'all, that's a way that the community and the public very quickly give you a response or an answer back, without understanding the subtleties and the significance, but you've got to promote this area. And then finally, economic redevelopment. I never will forget, the first building we painted in downtown was the old Echols Jewelry Store, and I knew we had done something wonderful, because I was standing out there with Jimmy Echols, who happened to be the chairman of, you can't make this stuff up, but it's the same thing that will happen in South Tifton, if you follow this plan and this strategy and work together. There was a farmer coming down Love Avenue in his pickup truck, and he slammed on brakes. We had just painted Jimmy's building this gorgeous color with cream columns like this, and this, I will remember it to the day, he said, my God, Jimmy, it's absolutely beautiful. And I knew right then and there, we were on the right track, and it was one building after the other, just like it can be one house, one project, one business after the other, that gets spruced up and fixed up, and it changes people's attitude, it changes the whole community, and as that, that old Tiftonian said at that funeral, it lifts the entire community up, and that person was absolutely right. And then here's the, what's the vision? And here's the most important question, to the city and to the community, whose vision is it? And the answer is, it's the communities. It's the people who live there and who've taken the risk through the years, but I want you to see that, I thought this graphic showed how you can have a vision of how something can look terrible, and with a lot of work and sweat equity and a little bit of money, you can really make it look different. And we looked across Tifton at housing investment, there's new housing, of course, going up in different parts of the community, we're at a stable economy right now, both nationally and at the state, but if you look at South Tifton, we've seen that historically, the values have not climbed, and there's very little new construction, or very little rehabilitation that's been done. And then, again, just like with Main Street, and you know, it happens to be that Main Street's down in that service station, but when we first started out, I've got to tell these little anecdotes. Do you know where the Main Street office was suggested to be placed the first time we came here? Now, I want you to listen, there's a story in this about how the county got involved. The city manager then said, hey Bruce, we got the jail cell under the old City Hall up here, it was up on the corner, we'll put you down in the jail cell, and the county commission chairman spoke up and said, I'll be darned if we're going to put our Main Street program in a jail cell. He had a wonderful office over in the county administration building, so the first city-sponsored revitalization program was put over in an office in the county, and as long as I stayed here and years after, the county was a partner, and they saw it, they knew the importance of it, because the county commission chairman realized, going back to promotion, how can you promote a redevelopment program when you hide someone down in a jail cell? And so I use this to talk about, you can take any space in any building, but I can tell you this, thirty-five years of experience says, put the office in the neighborhood, not on Twelfth Street, in the neighborhood, because you want people to come into that office, and you want them to talk about their issues and their problems, and to seek the assistance that can be given to them. And then finally, who keeps up with what? Absolutely, this program needs to be accountable to this council. Every six months, there needs to be a report on improvements, investments, and so that you all can defend your involvement in the community redevelopment. And like I told you, you'll see a tremendous difference in the tax base, and in the global concept, when we were doing Clean Community years ago, we always said, think globally, act locally. You need to think in terms of sustainability and energy conservation, because many of the people who live in these frame houses cannot afford high utility bills, so if you go in and rehab them, you need to think in terms, and there's all kinds of information on sustainability. Where is the money going to come from? It's layered funding. You'll have to, as a city and as a community, figure out, you go out there and find partners. But I will tell you this, having worked for the state government. But I will tell you this, having worked for the state government for a number of years, this state has money. You've just got to know where to go and who to find out how to get it. So, real quick, the recipe for the cake is right there. How to use this fairly complicated study, but you start off with the city of Tifton, who according to the strategy and the plan, may create a Tifton Urban Redevelopment Agency, they hire a manager. The state of Georgia has empowered that the city and the manager to do exactly what needs to be done. And then you go out and support investments, projects, and successes, and celebrate it. You know, can't you see next year sometime? And I'm just going to tell you, because you have to be a visionary to see this. Right there, Commissioner Tarrell, in front of Newfront, totally restored, and you have the biggest block party you've ever had in 100 years. That's the kind of celebration we did in Main Street. We celebrated investments when all of Main Street wasn't done. But you have to have that patience and time to do it. Okay, so I think that's pretty well-
Yeah, let's say some, a couple, if anybody has any questions with Bruce, that'd be great. Mayor, council? I know we've talked about this a couple meetings, so they're up to speed. They actually saw the presentation itself, so this really was the catalyst to get started. So we're off on, actually, the third step already.
Good.
But I just, I want to take the opportunity to thank you publicly for your work and your involvement-
My pleasure.
...and your historical knowledge, because it certainly has been an awesome help.
And if I may take one second. So in addition to the study that you see, there's also an accompanying CD. And this is like the Library of Congress. This has everything you can imagine to be of assistance to this city and to, if you decide to hire a manager or a director, without them having to go spend time to look for it. And equally important, there are two other Tifton studies that were put on this. And I know that we can store this in the cloud, I mean, I get that. But for you all, I think it's important to have this library. There are also economic development studies that have been done that parallel the redevelopment of this neighborhood, or the potential redevelopment of this neighborhood. And I've put those in there as well. You have all the ammunition, as well as tools and resources that you probably would use in the next five or six years on this disc. So I want you to make sure that you all have that as well. I brought those all for you, yeah. And I'm going to give them to the city clerk, the keeper of records. And thank you so much, any questions, real quick?
I think we're all committed to doing whatever it takes. We appreciate what you've put together.
Well, again, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. It did take the good part of a year, but I, once we did it, I realized it was time well spent to give you a quality plan and assessment. And there are some things that, you know, that you'll have questions about, but I'll be available at any time if you need to ask me something, all right?
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Just a side note, you know, whenever you jump into a venture like that, or like this, you know, you have to look at the direct beneficiaries and indirect beneficiaries. And I think when you do, you have a, if you can have a winner on the direct beneficiaries, and then you can have a win on the indirect beneficiaries, then it's a great project. And in this case, our direct beneficiaries will be the neighborhood itself and the residents, who can take advantage of these grants and all these different opportunities that'll be given to them to improve their property. And I think on slide eight, when it talked about the difference in tax base from on North Park, giving that example or whatnot, is pretty telling. You know, 75% of the money is North Tifton. With that sort of investment being done in South Tifton, you're going to really relieve the north side of town with the property, the bait and the tax dollars that they have to contribute to the overall general fund of the city. So, you know, when you have the win-win, you know, opportunities in front of you, I think it's just, I mean, this is a no-brainer project. And I appreciate your time and energy put into this, Bruce.
Okay, excuse me. And putting this director in place, we, I don't think we need to go outside of Tifton and make somebody in. I think we should search Tifton, we got pretty bright people that live in Tifton. And to direct this project. I don't think that the project should be in this building, or the building on the street, like you say. Put the project in the community, where, which, the direct, community. And the director should have some sense of where and what she or he is directing.
Well, there'll be a board, you know, appointed by us.
Right.
And that'll give some of that community involvement right there. If, like I say, I'd love to hire somebody from Tifton, if that's not an option or whatever. Or somebody, they will be able to give their input.
Right.
Because a board will be made up of that community.
Right, I'm just saying, I know we, we're going to, I want this council to look closely at the director.
We need to get the most qualified person, hopefully.
Yes.
That person can be local.
Hopefully, hopefully. I would like for it to be local, believe it or not.
The most qualified, to me, is the-
Yeah, who's, yeah, makes a difference.
You take a look at that downtown development board, it's really, you know, they've done a lot of great work, and they're local, they have a little bit of, you know, skin in the game when it comes to the overall liability of downtown. So that same sort of, you know, sort of skin in the game needs to be done for the urban redevelopment.
Exactly.
Exactly, so I agree with you on that.
You know, just, we just want somebody that's, because if you, if you give a person a lot of money and don't know what to do with the money, they just got a bunch of money on their hands. So we, and that's what's been happening up until now. We've been getting money, but it has not gone side-by-side for baby two. So, we just want to make sure this person understands and can work in this area with a redevelopment.
We're going to be looking at where the redevelopment.
Yeah.
That's right.
No, I agree with what you're saying. All right, good deal. All right, next, yeah, is the consent agenda. These are items we've went over before, our last meeting workshop. Any of these, we want to take individually. Johnny, I know you had some issue with, let's see, which one was it?
It's under new business, so we'll talk about it.
Oh, it's under new business, okay, okay. All right, so-
I move we approve all of them.
As presented?
As presented together, Johnny, okay, we're better.
I want to prove, uh, uh, yeah. I'm trying to call you, man. Tell us, could you tell us a little bit more about that proposal for this, this Dozier?
Yes, what you did.
Uh, uh, last, at the last meeting, you was telling us about the cost and the buyback, you know, and you were, this is the kind of crawler that we need for the landfill.
Yes, and it, we're talking about leasing this one because it's more economical to lease it than to outright purchase it. And also, the buyback or the, I'm not sure of the term in the lease program, but we will be getting back the same money in the lease program as we would in the buyback program.
Okay.
So, at the end of the five years, it's worth just as much in the lease program as it is in the buyback program. And then it's a machine that they'll take back, and then we'll return another one at the end of that year.
Right. Councilman Pope, when, yeah, and I want him to hear, you said, Ricky, I'm sorry I couldn't-
That's all right.
I wanted, I wanted, Councilman Pope to, yeah.
You're good.
We're good, all right, thank you, Ricky. Okay.
So we got a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, next, under new business, is the ordinance amending the Land Development Code regarding non-conforming structures and uses?
Council, let me take that one. We had, we worked out that, and Wes, I think you had some questions. I went back and looked, there's also some issues about non-conforming lots of record. And when we discussed it at the last workshop, when I looked at the non-conforming lots of record, I want to make sure that those two marry each other, so to speak. So I want to have a, you know, closer look at that before you all consider it. So I would recommend if you all would make a motion to postpone indefinitely, because that gives an opportunity, take a closer look at it, make sure we got our non-conforming structures and our non-conforming lots of record exactly how we want them.
I think I like that.
And council, before action, I'd like to add something too. Again, we've talked about this, but the staff is asking for the city to address just two parcels, two parcels. And I left a map at your station, if you look at one of them specifically, it's Captain Point. What we're asking is to actually rezone those two parcels right there next to each other to begin the process, not only for the CDBG, but for the zoning of the property for infill. So it is a lengthy process, this is something that we need to do for the grant itself. But instead of the non-conforming, I'd like to have your approval, not tonight, but be okay to go ahead and start posting this for a rezoning. We have to do a public hearing on it, and then we could also talk about it at the next work session. So if you'll allow us to do that, I appreciate it. It really is critical, again, the next step in this process. But I'd like to just address those two parcels by itself and move through this.
Sounds fine with me.
So, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I move we postpone this ordinance, amending this ordinance. You say?
We got a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, next is the resolution granting enterprise zone incentives to the Harper Family LP for renovations at 1313rd Street.
There has not been any change to that. And again, council folk, we haven't had a chance to talk about this. It's standard enterprise zone application meets all thresholds. I do want to say that this form and the project information, how we go about giving these incentives, need to be redone. That was on my to-do list. But again, for time purposes, we're going to look at that in the next couple of months. But for this particular project, everything meets the block, and I recommend that we proceed forward.
That's, all right. Can I get a motion to accept?
So.
Got a motion, got a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, next is a resolution providing for new alcoholic licenses for dollar, dog grocery and meats located at 910 South Central Avenue.
Okay, yeah, council, there was some question about this particular location. And again, as they go through their process, I was informed that they have not met the business license aspect or haven't been inspected by the agriculture. So therefore, until they meet those two specifics, I'm recommending that we put the alcohol license on hold until they do so.
That's what we talked about.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, making sure that they were with-
Ryan, you make a motion?
Well, basically, you know, when we're dealing with an application for an alcohol license, we either grant the license or it's tabled pending a hearing. So what I would suggest is that we table it pending the hearing on the license. And then, maybe perhaps, as we work through to the hearing date, maybe some of these issues may work themselves out. The only option we have tonight concerning the application, either grant it or table it pending a hearing. So, it sounds like you want to table it pending the hearing.
Yeah. So I move that we table the application?
Okay. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Do we have to give a state, I mean, a date specific?
No, because there'll be a time application that we'll have to send them, you know, for a hearing date, and it'll be placed on for a hearing date before the council.
Okay, all right, so again, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, let's see. All right, let's see, next is resolution providing for an amended alcohol license for Friendly Express located at 1310 US Highway 82 West.
These are typical, and Jessica's is now in the thick of her work with these licenses. So these two came in, big box stores, so we're just trying to move them forward. All the information is correct, and there are no issues.
Move to approve.
Move to approve both.
Can we do both resolutions at the same time? Move to approve both.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say, if I say aye?
Aye.
All right, down to other business, Pete, you got a report?
Thanks, I'd like to call on Wayne to come up and give you a financial snapshot, where we are to date.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I have given you a similar report in the past. And this one, the first page is on our general fund. Year-to-date, we, our revenue's at $4.8 million, which is at 35% of the total budgeted for the year. This is through five months, five months target usually around 42% at this time. There are several singular large items normally that hit once a year. Example is the excise tax for electricity from Georgia Power. We have not gotten that yet, it should come in the next couple of months. And generally, that's over a million dollars just by itself. So some of our revenues don't come in equally year-round, so this number's going to fluctuate each month. In our expenditures, most all the expenditures are right around 42%, except for a couple. And it's mainly, it's the ESG things. The December bill was, went ahead and was put in and entered in our system right there at the end of November. So you have six months' worth of ESG bills showing up in five months. So that's why they're at 50% instead of the 42%. And that's the same also in the water fund, gas fund, and the sewer fund, which ESG does things. It was mainly, because the bill was just entered in one day earlier than it should have been. I am talking to staff on that, sir. Or you're looking at me, sir, I'm like... Any other questions, real quick there?
The insurance rebate, didn't that come in around December?
It'll be coming, it'll be coming in, and when it does, we'll get it in there.
Okay. Do we have an idea of what that's going to be?
Last year, it was over a million dollars, it should be probably about the same again this year.
Okay.
On the second page, we have the hotel motel tax fund. Through November, we actually were at 55% of what we had budgeted for the year, which is an increase, it was above our budgeted amount. Expenditures so far have been $167,502. So right now, there is a positive, revenues over expenditures are $437. Big difference there is, is there's, you're a month behind on what we pay out to the tourism associations, because we, it gets paid out a month behind all the collections. We collect it all, and then we cut them their portion of things. So there, that one thing is a month behind. So you would only have four months paid out through November at this time.
Pete, let me ask you something about hotel motel tax. While I get to that, have you had any conversations with the county manager about, you know, talking to our elected officials up in Atlanta about the hotel motel tax?
Not since our last talk. He's had a personal issue, so he has not been in the office much. So that's on my to-do.
Okay.
But they basically agreed, have they not?
The majority of them agreed in our SDS.
Yeah, what is, um...
Look at Tony over there.
How long do we have? I know, when does session start versus how long do we have to get that information in so they can take a look at that?
It's, we're closing in pretty quick, probably, you know, by the first, second week of January. It's, we're, we're, we're closing in, uh, pretty quick, probably, you know, by the first, second week of January. But, uh, we'll have to talk to our legislators, uh, and if it's, if it's doable, that'll take local legislation, so we'll have to work on that quick.
Okay, good, well, I think it's something that both our governments. No, I think that it has to be initiated by the county, is that correct?
Well, that's, that's, well, who got initiated, but we gotta go pass Carter, whatever's going on. And do we send a, a formal letter from the city to the county, commission for them to take up at their next meeting?
My, my collection, well, I mean, the, the last time we sought to do this, uh, the city can go forward and seek, you know, seek, um, local legislation to increase the hotel motel tax inside the city limits. Uh, I think the pushback last time was is that the, uh, the county did not wanna raise it in, in the county. And the, uh, the legislate, our legislator did not want to go forward just with the city, but wanted to have the county to, to come along with us. So, just so it's clear, I mean, we can move forward, you know, on the city, seeking local legislation, uh.
Let me ask.
We still wanna run into the same issue we ran into.
Which legislator did you talk to, the city of Tifton's got, what, three?
I think it was Penny Houston that was seeing that through for us.
Okay, well, I mean, they've got one hotel, if I'm not, if I'm not right. But I'm just saying, send a letter to the county and ask them, here, we would like to raise it, we would ask them to join with us in doing that, and, and, and move it that way versus trying to talk to Carter on, on what, whatever, and put it formally in a letter, and ask them to move forward. If they don't, then we'll have to go forward on our own and, and, I mean, my lord, we got thirteen or fourteen, and the county has one, she's gonna turn it down because of that one?
Well, I think that, I think the process, you know, just because, because of the, the problem we ran into last time, I think that if we can get the county, uh, that they also would like to do it, I think the process would, would be much smoother, uh, going forward.
What's the split hotel motel tax to, to the county? Now, the incorporated areas, what you're talking about, because technically, all hotels, you look at it like that, are in the county, but I mean, uh.
In the city?
Well, only one is not in the city. All over in the county, but only one is not in the city.
One, in, incorporated here, okay. So what is, what is the split? Is there?
We, um, uh, Mr. Ellers, uh, if I remember correctly, from hotel motel tax seminar I took about two or three weeks ago, the ones inside the city limits of Tifton, they pay their hotel motel tax to the city. The one in the county pays theirs to the county.
Okay, so we get one hundred percent?
Split is sixty, sixty-fourty.
But then there, then there's the requirement of what can be, has to be spent on. The marketing-related stuff for tourism.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's, and that's, and that's our, the portion we give to the tourism associate to promote.
Yeah, I understood, well, the, I, well, I didn't know that there was a split between us and the county.
There's benefits.
We get three pennies to the county.
We get three pennies. Why not? If they.
Well, that's, I mean, it's expensive for all of them.
Okay, well, I, I'd like the letter idea, we can do that, get it moving, and we need to get it up to representatives at least.
That's the way we talk about it.
That, that's right, I, and, is, uh, Pete's right, I mean, because we gotta get this to, uh, to our, uh, legislator. They give it to their legislative council to draft the bill, so there's a process that, that needs to go through, and the sooner we can get that ball rolling, the better.
I, I, you know, I'm, I know what you're saying, and I, I know you're, hey, let's put some pressure on those guys or whatever, I still wanna see, I, I mean, 'cause the last conversations that we did have with our county partners was that they were interested in doing the same thing. And they, they saw that it being a, a benefit to the city that's paid by people who are coming in to visit, it's not paid by the city to, you know, by the, by the residents of the county. I mean, I'm sure that some of them do use hotels, um, for whatever reason or whatnot, uh, but, uh, majority of that money is used or is gathered from people who don't, who are busy.
I'm just trying, I'm just saying, I'm organizing the thing.
Yeah.
And send a letter saying, here's what we wanna do, you know, previous conversations, your agreement, show your agreement, let's, let's get it moved, that's all I'm.
I'll start the process.
Get it documented, so we have something to send to Penny Houston, whoever.
Yeah.
Or, you know, the county can do it. I'm sure they'll go along, but we don't get anywhere, 'cause we ain't, that's my whole point, we're gonna fool around, and it'll be another year going by.
Alright, I'll start the process.
Alright.
Okay, uh, to the next page, which is the water fund. Currently, our charges for services of water fund is sitting at forty-five percent of what was budgeted, which is, is a good, good, good C. Our expenditures are sitting in total at twenty-seven percent. One of the things, if, it, it, that may stick out is that the apartment forty-four ten, which is, is called Water Operations, is way under budget. That department probably has several line items that usually done it in a year, depreciation, and our indirect cost allocation, our customer service allocation, which make up over a million dollars of that budget, happened at the end of the year. So, that's why it's so far under, and you'll see the same with the sewer fund and the gas fund, that they have a separate operations. Those are the big line items in that department, and those are things we do at end of the year.
So, end of the year meaning end of the fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
So, could you put us a line or something, says, okay, what's five twelfths of it? So we have something, because looking at this.
Yeah.
Tells me, I.
Okay.
But if I knew what five twelfths of the other was, then it would in turn say, okay, we're in line, if that's not a problem.
Okay, we'll do, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, the next page, we have the sewer fund. Sewer fund, uh, the charges for services are at forty-one percent, is right under our forty-two percent target. Uh, it, and usually, your sewer fund is, or your, I mean, I guess, what you call your loss leaders, and the fact that our revenues are, are right now coming in pretty close to being on target budget-wise so far is a good thing. Uh, also, the sewer operations account, which is forty-three thirty, there's that, that difference, like in the water fund. Uh, we do have almost fifty percent of this ESG sewer department has already been thing, that goes back to the sixth month already included in our five months' worth of history. Right now, the sewer fund has revenues over expenditures of two hundred ninety thousand dollars. The next page has our gas fund. Gas fund had charges for services at thirty-seven percent of what's budgeted, and since we haven't hit our cold section of the year, we're coming pretty close to being on target, so that's encouraging. Hopefully, we have a cold enough winter that gas fund stays, stays strong. Uh, here, the same thing, and here, you have the, the gas operations. Reason that is even higher budgeted is the fact that we, where we buy gas goes into that department also. So the cost of the gas is, is another line item, in this department, you don't see in the water and sewer. If you notice, those are budgeted line items for about one point five, one point six, this one's at three point five. A big part of that budgeted amount is our purchase of gas from MGAC. It's, it's our cost of goods sold, so, so, if, it puts it, puts it in, in manufacturing terms for you, sir. Uh, right now, it's showing revenues over expenditures of five hundred twenty-seven thousand. And last one is our solid waste fund. Charges for services are at one million three forty-eight thousand, which is pro, sixty-seven percent of what we budgeted. We've had a, kinda probably had a, with the storms we've had so far, we've had a lot of extra material going into our landfill, so revenue is up. Our expenditures through that time is nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, or, or for just regular apartments, and then our total is nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, all expenditures. And right now, we have revenue expend, over expenditures of four hundred forty-seven thousand. Please also remember, we don't have depreciation expense included in this yet, so that, that will affect it by, at the end of the year. But that is a non-cash flow item for y'all. Is there any questions you may have? Okay.
Talk about later, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Council, just, um, two other things, um, number one, uh, that, uh, we're gonna have a, a send-off party for La Creche this Thursday from five-thirty to six-thirty at Forty-One in Maine, so I'll put something out, uh, for you, if you, if, um, if you could attend, that's this Thursday. And then, second, um, the chief told me Captain Hyman's mother's passed away. Um, she was in Pennsylvania, and, um, he is trying to take care of that, so we send our condolences to him and his family. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Alright, next is the, uh, councilman's conference. Uh, Jack, you wanna go first?
Okay, um, I had someone stop me on Friday morning, and it brought up the hurricane and the water, and the fact that we were out of water and, and that kinda thing. And so, you know, their, their view was the city and Pete had not done enough to prepare. Now, I thought we'd gone through the facts, and I explained this, we had engineers, you know, we, we operate with ESG who's run by engineers, so these people know what they're doing, uh, around those kinda things. So I thought I would just bring out a few facts so that we can stop some of this, and I would've thought, you know, that people would understand, number one, a category one hurricane is not a normal event, although it appears we're gonna continue to have those kinda things, uh, for reasons I won't go into. Uh, but, clearly, the city's water system meant all federal and state law regarding redundancy with regard to the system, okay? Red, redundancy is, is provided by having multiple wells, water storage and elevated tanks, and redundant power supply. You can either have a standby generator, dual power from an electrical grid, okay? Eight wells had dual feed, one had a standby generator. We've got nine water wells, only three need to be operational to meet water demand, okay? Seven tanks, elevated tanks with storage of two and a half million gallons. The demand for the entire day is four point nine, okay? So if we lost power to all the wells, the system could still run in excess of twelve hours without losing pressure. So, at the, immediately prior to the hurricane, eight of nine wells were in operation. The ninth one was out of service due to a lightning strike. Last time I looked, we couldn't necessarily control what struck where, but it was. Parts were ordered, these things aren't on a shelf, takes nine to twelve weeks to come in, and it'd been down for about six weeks. That happened to be the well that had the standby generator. And you say, well, why doesn't each one of them have a standby generator? Well, because that would have cost anywhere from two to three million dollars, and would be considered not needed when you already have dual feed on the others. So to spend two or three million dollars just would've been a, a waste of money. When the hurricane hit, it took out power to every single water well within the system, every one of them. However, all the tanks were filled, okay, the staff was ready, as soon as conditions warranted it, the power company was ready to go and repair. It was about two AM that they were able to go out. But, like I said, given the amount of water that was in the tanks, we should've been able to survive over twelve hours. Mysteriously, about five-thirty AM, the pressure dropped to twenty PSI. At this time, it was determined that a customer's eight-inch water main had broken catastrophically. And that created a water loss which discharged all the water out of the tanks. Okay, now, neither Pete nor ESG nor the city could've foreseen that a customer's eight-inch water main was gonna break. But that's what happened, and all the water drained. And it dropped below twenty, twenty PSI, and the state mandates that a boil water advisory has to go out to the public, and that's, and that's what happened. So it went out, they tested the water, it takes twenty-four to forty-eight hours, uh, for the results. Power companies repaired the water mains by seven-thirty AM, and then the eight-inch water break was repaired. So, had this pipe not broken, there was no, there was no issue. Even though a category one hurricane comes through and knocks out all the power to all the wells, we would not have had an issue, there would not have been an advisory, nobody would've lost water, nothing. And then you got this break in, in the pipe, okay? So, hopefully, before people start running around and, and running their mouth, 'cause they came onto me and said Pete should be fired. I said, why should Pete be fired? Poor management of the water system, okay? Well, the reality is that what I've just given you came from engineers who know a heck lot more about water than I do, and they know more about water than Pete does, and anybody else, you know, on the council, so, that's the facts. Uh, I hate that we're still talking about it after this, after the, the hurricane, but we are, uh, and so, things are back. I'm hopeful the next time a category one hurricane comes through and knocks all the power out, that this, we will not have an eight-inch pipe break. Because then there will be no issue, and it would've been a non-event, and, and the system would've operated, uh, as is, and, and as, as the, one last comment, the engineers said that they would've used, and they, they operate numerous, the public works for numerous cities around, that they would've used Tifton as a textbook example of a very robust water system, because of the redundancy that we have. So, anyway, that's all I got today.
Johnny, how you gonna, how you gonna come back?
I'm just glad, Johnny. I'm just glad we had water. And, and I, and I think, uh, ESG, Pete, I think he did a tremendous job on having that. Uh, the guy that ESG, you did a good job. And, and the wells, except, within, with twelve hours, the water system was about to numb. So, there wasn't really no, 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 no griping or anything, to my, from, from, from my perspective. I think everything was handled just right. That's, that's it.
Good deal. Well, there's some special group here, uh, with an attendance tonight, the Voice Cast of America. I really appreciate what y'all do for not only Tifton, but also for what you do for our young men. You know, we, uh, they, they play an important role, uh, in both the community and in the lives of these folks, and so, uh, we wanna thank y'all very much for what y'all do for us. Also, I want to say on, uh, behalf of the city council, to all the employees of City of Tifton, Merry Christmas, uh, and Happy New Year, 'cause I'm sure we won't be back for them, uh, and also, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all the City of Tifton. Thank you. And we adjourn.